All right, then I will call this meeting of the Kaysville City Planning Commission to Welcome to everyone. Declaration of conflict of interest from the commissioners.
None.
None.
All right, seeing none, we will move on to item number three, a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation at 1025 North Kensington Heights for Alexander Greb for Gluten Free Gear LLC.
Well, since we've had a couple of doozy meetings, we thought we'd make it a little easy for you guys tonight. So this is a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation at 1025 North Kensington Heights for Alex for his business Gluten Free Gear, which I would like to have a description or why the name of the business. When I thought it was Gluten Free Gear, I really didn't expect this to be for firearms dealer. So this is going to be a firearm or a home-based firearms dealer. He is compliant with Kaysville City zoning. However, we are waiting through the process with the FFL and the ATF. For his FFL license through the ATF, they have a pretty rigorous application process, and they come out and do an inspection of the home. And then, once I hear from them, I will pass the information on to the police department, who, once they give their approval, I will be able to finish the business license approval on our side. There was a sign placed on his property last week. We've had one person call, and it was just literally to ask what the sign was for. There wasn't any concerns or disagreement or concerns for the business in that neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval for this conditional use permit to operate Gluten Free Gear at 1025 North Kensington Heights. With any additional conditions, Planning Commission feel are necessary as per our Kaysville City Code and conditional use permits under 1738. The applicant is here and is happy to answer any questions that you, as a commission, might have for him.
Very good, thank you.
Is this him?
How's it going, guys? My name's Alex. This is just gonna be like a part-time business that I do on the side. My nine-to-five, I'm an engineer, I work for the Air Force up at Hill Air Force Base. So this is just kind of a passion project term business, and if all goes well, I'm hoping to be able to do it full-time someday and eventually open up like an actual commercial location. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
Does Chairman have a question for you?
Very good.
I didn't know what an FFL was, so I had to Google it. But now, I find that as you obtain your federal license, you may purchase and store ammunition, you may import guns.
There are different types of FFLs. I'm applying for the manufacturing FFL. I'm not gonna be running like a manufacturing setup, but in order for me to be able to build custom firearms and like the ground up just with off-the-shelf parts, I have to have a manufacturing license.
So you'll be doing gunsmith work?
Gunsmith work, essentially, yes.
And my information here says that if I wanted to purchase a firearm, I would get an appointment to come to your home?
Yep, set an appointment sometime between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. I don't expect a lot of foot traffic in the neighborhood, and I do mostly online retail. So if someone purchases something online, I contact their FFL, get the, you know, transfer paperwork in order with the ATF, and, you know, just comes and goes with UPS, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those are good questions, though. Over time, I've had to learn that, the process as well, and when you hear firearms being sold in a neighborhood, it typically puts up some flags and some concerns, but they have safes, they go through, I mean, if you want to tell them all of the process of the inspection.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I've got two gun safes in there already, I'm about to get a third, just for the business. They're huge. You could, you know, store a couple of you guys in there. They're heavy, they're almost 1,000 pounds, so, super secure, always locked, everything's always, you know, kept properly, so, yeah, sure, I run a good tight ship, so, should be pretty smooth sailing.
That seems like you might have kind of answered this, but, so customers will come, if they come to your house, it'll be through appointment. Do you ever foresee large numbers of people at the same time?
Uh, no, not more than one, one at a time. It's gonna be just me, so I only have, I try to just do one-on-one appointments with the customer, give them, you know, my full attention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only other question I had.
Okay, cool.
I'm not gonna ask it.
No, you can ask it, it's fine.
I'm not gonna ask it.
Okay. I'm originally from California, where everything is labeled Gluten Free, Organic, and Feuering.
I gotcha.
So, wanted something a little bit more under the radar instead of, you know, tactical or shooter in name.
It's a really good name.
Thanks, I thought it was a really good name.
Yeah.
It's got you guys talking, so obviously, it's doing all right.
I have one question for staff. There's no sign associated with the business, is there?
A sign for, sorry?
A sign at the residence?
A sign for the business, at the home.
He's allowed to have one, like, 12 by 12 sign on the front of the home.
12-inch by 12-inch?
Yeah. Did I say 12-foot? I mean, go for it.
You said 12 by 12.
12 feet by 12.
Yeah, just a 12-inch.
Are you planning on having a sign?
Uh, probably not, I might have to do like a little 12 by 12 thing, I'm expecting someday. If the law allows it, allows it.
But if, you know, it's not required as part of the business, so.
No, if he's entitled to it, that's fine with me, just curious.
Yeah.
All right. Is this a public hearing?
No, this is not, this is just for a conditional use permit, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, unless there's additional discussion that hasn't occurred yet. If nobody else has anything, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Gluten Free Gear LLC as proposed in the staff report, and with the staff recommendation as the basis for our motion, for my motion.
We have motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion?
Please, Mr. Chairman, I understood from staff that the issuance that we're recommending would come as a, conditions proceed, are both approval from the federal authority in review by the Kaysville Police Department. And is that accurate?
So the conditional use permit, it is not required to have the ATF or the FFL license at this time, or even the business license, it's strictly for the use in the home. The business license will not be issued without, let's see, approval from the police department and from the ATF.
Thank you for that clarification, separate items.
So, yeah, so the conditional use is just for the use in the home, the business license will just be for the sales, so, yeah, they're separate.
I appreciate that.
That is a standard procedure as well, from my experience with this item, is that usually the feds say, "Well, as soon as you're okay with it at the local level, we'll..."
It's kind of a horse before the cart kind of thing, and, so I have to let them know that we're doing the approval here, and they want to check the zoning. And usually, once we say that the business license application has, at least we've paid for it, and the zoning's accurate and correct, then they will help with the issuance of the license.
Yeah.
This conditional use permit is the first step, or the first rung of the ladder, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I think we can just do a group vote, all those in favor of this proposal?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. If you ever have any questions, feel free to reach out.
And Alex, I will send you a letter saying that the conditional use has been approved, and then let's stay in touch next week and see if we can figure out the license and everything. Okay. Okay, yeah, let's stay in touch.
All right, we will move on to agenda item number four, a conditional use permit for an EMC sign for Lifetime Dental located at 368 North Main Street.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is an electronic message sign proposed for Lifetime Dental. The sign is going to measure approximately 10 feet by 8 feet, and it will be on that corner of Main Street across from Mortuary. The total square footage of the sign, of the EMC portion of the sign, is only 55% of the total sign size, meaning that it meets both the general commercial provisions as well as the restrictions in our sign code that regulate EMC signs. This is an illustration of the proposed sign. As you can see, it will be within our requirements for sign size for EMCs, and will meet any requirements for EMCs not to cause a nuisance to surrounding properties. The, the sign was placed on the property of, on the 19th, and we haven't received any comments from the public, so with that, staff is recommending approval with any conditions Planning Commission feel are appropriate.
All right, very good.
Any applicant, he's here to answer questions.
May I ask you to go back one slide? Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about this too, so, looking at this, my understanding is the actual digital part is really only 24 square feet, right? The, that lower section.
Were the smiles for life about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, the tricky thing is with the way our EMC sign code is written, it differentiates between the actual EMC portion versus the size of the sign itself. It is entirely possible that I did that math wrong when I wrote the staff report, but as long as it meets that criteria of not exceeding that percentage, then it would still meet the standard, and I can...
Yeah, just, you know, looking at the math.
It can't be more than 75% of the sign cabinet, so, at 55%, it would be underneath that.
So do you count, like, below the electronic message portion, there's kind of just a solid portion, is that counted as part of the sign?
Um, it's considered part of the sign, it's not considered part of the electronic message center.
Right, yeah, but it is part of the total square footage for the sign?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it says here, there's the push-through letter, so the Lifetime Family Dental, that part up there is also going to be eliminated, but the electronic sign is the smiles for life, that's the one that we changed.
Yeah, that's, that's the portion that would be changing, and that makes it a conditional use because of the electronic component.
I don't have any, I don't have an idea of where it's going on the, is that still on the corner? Is it gonna be on the corner?
So, on the slide here, it shows, yeah, just on that intersection of 300 West and Main Street.
Okay, so it's out of the site triangle, that was gonna be my question. So the, the part in red, that's where it's gonna be?
Yeah, that small red triangle is where the sign is gonna be placed, in that...
You mean the rectangle?
Rectangle, yes, thank you, it's been a long day. And that purple triangle is the site distance, so.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern, is to just, you wanna make sure you don't block visibility in any way with that sign. And then, another question I had was, is there a lumens plan? Do we have a regulation about brightness and a method of operation? In other words, is this on all night? Is it on?
So, as far as regulation, we don't have a specific standard as far as the brightness. What our code does say is that, you know, we ask that it doesn't cause any glare or rapid blinking, and in most cases, when we discuss this with the applicant, you know, there's an understanding that it'll be dimmed at nighttime, and I believe the code mentions a provision for dimming during nighttime hours as well, but that, there is not a provision in our sign code that says it can only be a certain brightness.
Okay, well, you know, a lot of cities don't have detail like that. Some do, usually the bigger cities do, but in this case, my big concern would be that in non-business hours, that it is not, it's not doing that, there's nothing more annoying than that. And signage is quite harsh, I think they're gonna have great visibility, but, again, it just, that's traffic safety, and then, you know, the dimming, I think, is important. And if it's just a discussion between staff and the applicant going forward, or the property owner going forward, if there's a complaint, I would assume that there is a handshake agreement, that they will work with the city on that.
Right, and that is something that the Planning Mission would, to my understanding, be able to include as a condition, I believe it's something we've done before, just getting a verbal confirmation that the applicant understands that that dimming is...
Yeah, and it, there should be some language in the conditional use provisions on the development of conditions that are related to impacts, and if there is, then you should be in the clear to make sure, because these folks may be perfectly fine with it now, but you may have somebody in the future who comes in, and they're pretty recalcitrant, and they tell you to stick it when you say, "Hey, that thing is changing too quickly, it's way too bright," you know, so. I fought these battles before, and they're not fun when it comes to signs, so.
No, sign code is a unique beast.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Seems like a pretty large sign. Am I reading this right? It's eight foot something, eight foot eight?
Uh, sorry.
At the tallest?
It is...
10 feet.
10 feet by 8 feet.
Is that like a normal...
That's, that's within what we would allow for a sign of this type, yeah.
Not like that. It's so bad, but if they eliminated, careful, it's wonderful. We're really liberal and illiterate, so, I wrote, I wrote sign regulations, I actually did my master's thesis on sign regulations.
And, and sir, if there's anything you wanna add, I don't know if...
Well, the lady's done a terrific job, and they were super... We had a lot of hoops to jump through, and they did a perfect job of it, I thought. In answer to the lumens question, we can make it whatever brightness you want, it can be shut off, it's got a timer. You clearly have recognized issues that have happened in the past, and to this point, we've, we don't even come in unless we're, we have all those questions answered.
Great.
And so, whatever y'all, if you say, "Well, lower down a little bit, easy." Turn off certain hour, easy.
Yeah, I'm not trying to give you hard time, I just, my experience with this stuff has been that, you know, it can be problematic, I'm not anticipating that at all, I think...
10, 15, 20 years ago especially, they're just, "Well, I can still go through city streets and see this thing, oh my word, that's not doing anybody any good."
Yeah.
So we, we don't think that's smart business at all, but...
Are you with Baker?
Pardon me?
Are you the property owner, or are you the sign company?
Part-owner with Baker. I live here in, just about a...
Great, great, well...
I own about a mile away, but I, so, I've been able to cop in with Anne and Mindy, and it's one of the best experiences we've had with cities, because sometimes, they're not always, we get to, eventually get to the point, but I know you had changed some of your, just recently, and somebody mentioned it's 10-foot, yeah, on the one hand, and we would love to have more signage below that, but it's not, in your, the city's not allowing for that, that's fine, but it's a really a beautiful sign, they don't have any of this, what's called 6 mil, which is the most, resolution-wise, it's the best one in the northern part of Utah. So it's a pretty sign, and it'll, you know, and I think everybody will like it when it goes up. Originally, Dr. Gottfried wanted, would have liked to have a pole sign, but, you know, I was pretty sure they weren't, they didn't allow that, and so this takes care of all his needs.
This will actually be more effective.
Pardon me?
This will be more effective than a pole sign.
It really will.
I'm sure.
I think, I think everybody will, it'll just be lovely.
You don't need a pole sign for dental clinic, you don't?
No, no. And it is, we measured off already, with all the authorities, as far as where it would be placed, as was, and it's right, right in that exact spot, and so it shouldn't be intrusive to anybody either way.
Yeah, this is full, fully LED, correct?
It is.
So you, yeah, with LED, you can really adjust color, you can adjust brightness, and...
Yeah, you know, if you've been to Jazz Games, theirs is like top line, the 6 mil, well, that's what this is.
Yeah.
So it'll be aesthetically pleasing, if you will.
Well, the technology has changed.
Not gonna be annoying anybody.
Technology has changed. I started issuing sign permits in 1987.
Really, where, what city?
Sandy.
Oh, oh, Sandy, yeah, they're still evolving.
Well, I wrote, I wrote their, their code way back in the 80s, so.
Did you?
Yeah.
Good for you.
So, anyway, anyway, it's just kind of fun to talk about signs after being away from it.
Well, I, I told my, I'd had a different profession about 10 years ago, and I got into this, and it's really fun.
Yeah.
And we recognize the need that to, of the city, be pleased with everything we do too, and the partnership, and the designs of them and everything, so.
Not to detail monger, thank you.
You bet.
All right, other concerns, questions, comments?
I've just been thinking about what other electronic signs we have on that main street right there. Seems like it's, the other dentist office has one.
There's very few, we just...
Just very few.
On the corner.
Yeah, okay.
And then you have Subway, Subway's got a...
Yeah, they have that pole sign.
And the city, of course, has theirs.
Yeah, we have the EMC sign here, and then we have the one at Barnes Park, that came into Planning Commission earlier this year.
Yep, in my mind, I was thinking, well, it's definitely gonna be very nicely done, and it will stick out, because there's not too many.
I think that's part of the reason why it's a conditional use, to limit that.
Please?
Is it appropriate time to make a motion?
I feel like it is, if anyone has any comments, we can...
If there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application for the sign, conditional use for, the electronic message center for Lifetime Dental, per our excellent staff report and their recommendation, which I trust has been reviewed thoroughly by the staff, based on the staff report and the input we've gotten from the applicant. I, I, I don't have any conditions to add or recommend, but I'm open to any that other commissioners might have.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything, discussion, or...
Please, Mr. Chairman, this is, I think, our third electronic sign during my relatively brief service. I've been in the position of the applicant in several cities in my professional career, and I know you mentioned that, that some cities have a code on lumens, and I think we should tackle that, not only lumens, but also audio for speakers, for car wash vacuums, for other, and I'll display my ignorance, perhaps we do have a decibel noise ordinance, but both lumens, and obviously, this sign's not gonna make a lot of noise, but if we don't have those things codified, as someone who has had to get those approved in South Jordan, St. George, that was always a specific requirement, and I think we're grown up enough to tackle that, so, just my two cents.
Just to address your question, Commissioner, we do have a car wash ordinance that we passed that speaks to the volume issue and the kind of add noise and brightness for car washes specifically. I know that the kind of question about illumination of signs and illumination more generally is something we've discussed as a potential code amendment, so that's definitely something we can look into, if it's something the commission would support.
And as is often done, I'm sure we can start or learn from one of those municipalities, but as an applicant, I had to show lumens, hours of operation, in some cities, we had to reduce the lumens at 10:00 p.m., and on the, on the audio, it was drive-up speakers for the financial institution, where we had to make sure they were not too loud, but...
Yeah, when I, when I started here, I was like, "Oh, there's nothing in our sign ordinance about illumination." I was surprised, but not every city has it.
So I've seconded the motion, and Anne commented.
Any other comments? All right, on the motion to approve the conditional use permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, very good, thank you, sir. We'll move on to agenda item number five, approval of the minutes from August 28, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Very short minutes, you know, for that meeting.
I was not in attendance, I'll need another commissioner to advance that.
I was in, I was there, I moved that we approved the meeting, the minutes from the August 28, 2025 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's none.
All right, approval of the minutes from the September 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have enough people here that were there? I was there. You were there, yeah?
Yes, I was there.
Is three enough?
I believe so.
Sure.
Well, need to be a court, or a majority of the court, so, but if anyone listened, I, you can still vote, as long as you feel like they're accurate, confident that they're accurate, and listen to me.
Okay.
Motion to approve? Was there already a motion to approve the 9/11?
No.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the 9/11 minutes, September 11th minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
But are you two abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
7:29 p.m.
Abstentions, okay.
I, I voted.
Other matters?
So, that's it. Honestly, I think, other than the APA, we had a good turnout for the Small Area Plan, we'll get that, the results basically are just information from that out to you, soon as we hear back from them on their feedback, did you have some? No. So, other than that, we are planning October 9th, and we've got, the Symphony is coming back, the discussion on that, from Symphony Homes and the property out by the sewer district, so.
Yay.
What date was that? Sorry, I missed.
October 9th.
Right.
And it has been an interesting process to watch, there's been lots of shifting of the project, and lots of discussions, and, so, it will, it'll be interesting to see how that meeting goes.
Yeah, something to look forward to.
Just watch for the project, or, you know, watch for the packet when it comes out. Other than that, I think we are, we are complete for the evening, unless you guys have anything else you'd like to discuss.
I just have a question about the night for the...
I just have a question about the night for the, those of us that'll be at the APA conference. Will there be time for us to get back?
There will be, yeah. The conference usually is typically done by 5:00 o'clock and then time to go home and get some food and then come back here at 7:00.
All right, just wanted to make sure, because I know it's gonna be an exciting evening.
And if it's too much and if it's, you know, yeah, it will be.
Well, my hope is that I'm just gonna have to sit in the audience that night, so, you know.
Well, we'll see how, yeah, we'll see how it goes. But yeah, thank you for being here.
Well, and thank you guys for prepping all this stuff for us. It's been great.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, we are adjourned.
Yeah, sure.